To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Carmen Rokoff.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Whorple.
Here, let the record show eight present, one absent. Mayor.
Hi, for the activity log for June 9th, good to see everybody, thanks for being here. The last couple of weeks I've been pretty busy internally, met with attorneys and economic development team a couple of weeks ago in regards to a piece of property we're looking at in North Hammond, it's available for redevelopment and it's completely underdeveloped, so it's something that we're getting ready to approach the council with and talk to you all about. Also, met with Enrique Mesa from the Hammond Optimus Youth Sports, talking about what's going on over there in the 4th district. Had breakfast with Councilman Barry Tyler a couple of weeks ago, talking about 3rd district's issues, it was nice to get together with the councilmen. Had a meeting with our two representatives since the South Shore Convention and Visitors' Bureau about issues between the city Hammond and South Shore Convention and Visitors' Bureau. As you all know, my appointee to the board is Kim Roberts, who's in charge of the Sportsplex. The Hammond Council appointment is Bernie Grisolia. There's a lot going on right now, if you guys have any questions about issues going on, I'm more than happy to talk with you about them. Appeared on WJOB in the morning with Jim Diddeloe last week, did an hour and a half on the show, talked about a variety of issues related to the city Hammond. Lunch with Indiana State Rep Mike Andrade, getting caught up on the culmination of the 2025 General Assembly session. Meeting in Porter County with a company that's interested in a piece of property located in the city Hammond. It's a significant development in the 3rd district. It's a factory, it's a very, very good piece of property if we can snag it from Porter County, so we're real happy about that. I think I'll be able to approach the council soon with more details on that. Excuse me. It's about the old Walmart, councilman. Meeting with Father Mark Kierowski of the Church of St. Raphael, the Archangel regarding the rules surrounding quiet zones for trains, particularly in Hessville. Appreciate Father Mark for approaching me on that. Lunch with Mayor of Whiting, Mayor Steve Speedbar regarding issues between city Whiting and city Hammond, I think we worked out quite a bit at that meeting. Had my usual monthly police captains meeting, it's always good to get together with the captains and the chiefs in the police department, make sure we're all on the same page. Meeting with the major tech AI company and their executives about a major economic development project to be located hopefully within the city Hammond, I have a feeling we'll talk more about that later today. Meeting with Coach Dave Sikowski, the former coach of the Hammond Chiefs regarding Coach Dave's new role as the coach of the Hammond collegiate baseball team that plays at a Riverside Park in the 4th district, name of that team is the Hammond Beavers. So, congratulations to Coach Dave on returning to Hammond with another collegiate baseball team. I met with Alberto Ochoa on behalf of the HUGS organization in regards to the annual Mexican Independence Day parade in Hessville. Attended meeting with attorneys for the Hammond sanitary district regarding updates on important litigation taking place within the district. And last but not least, attended the annual city Hammond builders luncheon at the Los Marsh Golf Course. I have a lot to talk about as the resolutions come up for today, I'm not sure if you have any more questions for me, but I will be staying for the debate. So, if you have any questions on anything else, I'm available to answer them.
Anyone have any questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
Mr. President, I make the motion that we approve the March 27, 2025 minutes and place them on file.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Salinas, seconded by Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I believe that was May 27th, not March.
My apologies, May.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for approval of claims dated May 21, 2025, and ending with claims dated June 4, 2025, claim number 4500 through claim number 4890 inclusive, in the amount of $9,051, hold on, $9,051,068.76, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Carmen Rokoff.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, one absent. Item number six, public hearings.
25R12, a resolution of the Hammond City Council confirming resolution number 24R20A2 that designated and established a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area.
Does anybody wish to speak on this issue? Does anybody wish to speak on this issue?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
25R12 is the voting on changing the specification of C1 to C4 on the local district, I so move.
Councilman Emerson, this is a public hearing on resolution 25R12, you're talking about the ordinance 25R12, which will not come out of committee till next meeting.
Okay.
Does anybody wish to speak on this public hearing? Does anybody wish to speak on this public hearing? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have any communications? Does anybody have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I think we've already mentioned this, but just want to re- re-announce, I guess, or announce once again at the mayor, you're hosting your Juneteenth program next, June 19th, which is, sorry, next Thursday, at 10:00 a.m. at MLK Junior Park. It starts at 10:00 a.m. and then the program I believe will run from 10:00 to 12:00, and then from 12:00 to 2:00, there'll be a car show as well. So excited for our city once again to be hosting the Juneteenth program at MLK Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Hearing none, communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings Thursday, June 19th, 6:00 p.m. at the Hanson Branch Library or HC3 Community Center at 6:00 p.m. And Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June 12th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. I'd also like to announce that this coming Wednesday, the Hammond Police Department is hosting a pop-up picnic at Edison Park from 12:00 to 2:00. So, we invite neighbors, children, please come out, visit with the police officers, and get to know them, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vines, does anybody else have any community, or committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Salinas.
The capital improvement board met on June 2nd, and I have some reporting from the meeting. We had four funding allocations, I'll go through them now. Funding allocation number 249 dealt with the Michigan Street slash US20 bridge widening over Kennedy, that was a 20% local match on our end, in the amount of $165,792.45. Item B, funding allocation number 250, was a general engineering service contract to First Group Engineering in the amount of $50,000. This is an annual general engineering service contract to perform various tasks and assignments for our engineering department. Funding allocation number 251, Memorial Park Construction Engineering to American Structure Point in the amount of $175,935.1. And our fourth and final allocation, number 253, was Holman Avenue Phase 2 construction. This again is a 20% local match on our end, in the amount of $882,659.96. And this Phase 2 includes from Russell Street to Douglas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Hearing none, committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinances, third reading and final passage, there are none. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
2513, an ord- I'm sorry, yeah, an ordinance to appropriate funds from the operating balance for the Hammond Park Department.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2513, refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting on June 23rd at 5:15 p.m.
And a public hearing on June 23rd as well?
Yes, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
2514, an ordinance to appropriate funds in the hotel motel in keepers tax fund for the Hammond Park Department.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2514, refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting on June 23rd at 5:15 p.m., and also a public hearing on June 23rd.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number 11, resolutions, and I would ask everybody that's following along to turn to page two, and we're going to start with item number E under resolutions, that is 25R16. Mayor.
25R16, a resolution of the Hammond Common Council approving the development agreement among the city of Hammond, Indiana, the city of Hammond Redevelopment Commission, 301 Digital Crossroads LLC, Decennial Group LLC, and CoreWeave Incorporated regarding the project at 100 Digital Crossroads Drive.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 24R16.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Rakos. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I, yes, this is a development agreement that has already gone through redevelopment, and it is amongst the city of Hammond Redevelopment Commission, 301 Digital Crossroads LLC, Decennial Group LLC, and CoreWeave Incorporated regarding the project at 100 Digital Crossroads Drive.
Mr. President. Hang on a second, we do have representatives from that company here that have a small presentation for us.
Mr. President, could I say something real quick before we get into that?
Go ahead, mayor.
Thanks. I wanted to also, I appreciate Councilwoman for introducing this, we have three resolutions pending before the council tonight over a very important economic development project. I'm going to introduce CoreWeave and the group that's here today. So, CoreWeave is an AI cloud computing company that specializes in providing graphic, graphics processing units, GPUs, accelerated computing infrastructure for AI developers and companies. City Hammond has been working with CoreWeave and Decennial Group for over a year on this particular development agreement. Decennial will construct and CoreWeave will locate in a new 450,000 square foot building at 301 Digital Crossroads Drive, signing a 20-year lease. CoreWeave is already a tenant at that existing data center at 100 Digital Crossroads Drive and will remain there as well. Investment amount is in the billions of dollars. Like, let that rest with you. Hammond's worth about $3 billion and change, assessed value. This project is much bigger than the entire assessed value for the entire city. Now granted, because of state laws, a lot of that's not going to be applicable to our assessed value, but this is the largest project we've ever worked on in the city of Hammond, okay? The investment amount is in the billions of dollars, spanning the next 20 years. Thousands of construction jobs will be created, and over 35 to 90 permanent jobs are expected to be created with salaries all over $75,000 each. Decennial is requesting a standard 10-year tax abatement on the construction of the building, and CoreWeave is requesting a 20-year, 100% technology deduction on their equipment at their current location and at their upcoming space. In return for these abatements, if we agree to them, the city Hammond will receive a community impact payment, CIPs, for the next 20 years of up to $4 million a year. It's an incredible impact for the city Hammond. We've been talking about permanently funding our scholarship program, this is the permanent funding source, if we can get everything done with this. For the next college bound conveniently costs right around $3 to $4 million a year, and our payment, our impact payments under this agreement for the next 20 years will cover college bound scholarship payments. 20 years, think about that. Councilman Barry's got two young men in his house right now, they would cover them, Barry. I don't even know the age off the top of my head, your kids would be covered with college bound. People that have one-year-olds would be covered under the college scholarship. We'd be able to tell everybody that lives in the Hammond, in the city Hammond and our kids, college bound's got you covered. That's going to help us sell houses, it's going to help us keep our population, and we're going to have the biggest, most advanced data center in the United States located right here in our city. Incredible impact for our city. The timeline of all this will begin once the power agreement is signed by the landlord, Decennial and NIPSCO. So basically, what we're doing is putting in place the ability to make this happen. The power is the big question of the day. NIPSCO is deciding and trying to figure out how they can get us this power. If, I think what we're doing is very smart right now. If we approve this agreement, and we give Decennial, we give CoreWeave what they're looking for, we show them we're all in, we blade at NIPSCO's doorstep, all NIPSCO has to do is get us the power, we could be looking at the biggest economic development project the city Hammond's ever done. I strongly recommend you guys approve this, I think it's a great, an amazing opportunity for our city, and I'm so glad that CoreWeave picked our city to, for their big expansion. So I want to thank CoreWeave, I want to thank Decennial, I want to thank everybody that's been involved in this project. It's been a long effort, and I'm very glad we're here. So, I don't know if you have any questions or if you want to go to the presentation, councilman, but.
What's the council, does anybody have any question for the mayor at this point?
Could I talk a little bit about power? I know that's an issue.
Yes.
I've had multiple meetings with the CEO of NIPSCO about this issue. If this is chosen, this will be NIPSCO's biggest customer, okay? I think NIPSCO wants this also, I think we're all trying to figure out how to make it happen. I think the Hammond Council approving this lays it on NIPSCO's doorstep, I think this is very wise. So, I do want to acknowledge that NIPSCO is the last, the last step we need to make this whole thing happen, so. So, I know there was concern about that, I wanted to address it from the get.
I've got a question.
Councilman Salinas.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
With regards to the data center, we listened to the gentleman earlier, and they were mentioning that I think a lot of the centers being cooled by air handlers and not water cooled.
Right, that's changed.
So then what's the significance of putting them on our leak floor?
Have you, I mean, I'm not, this is a rhetorical.
I have toured, I have toured.
This is a rhetorical question, okay? If you all have been noticing what's going on with data centers across Indiana, across the country, and a lot of places that companies like CoreWeave go to aren't welcoming them with open arms, in fact, a lot of places, it's outright hostility when data centers want to locate in their facility. Part of the reason is they're located too close to neighborhoods. You can't get farther away from neighborhoods, as our peninsula, the data center peninsula, we're calling it now, you can't get farther away from neighborhoods than you can on that peninsula. It's surrounded by power, which is wonderful, and it's real close to the city of Chicago, which I imagine is also appealing. And you get the amazing advantages of Hoosier, low taxes. So it's really, in my opinion, the perfect data center site.
Thank you.
Any questions? Councilman Whorple, I appreciate it, let me speak.
Thank you. If you guys'd like to come up and introduce yourself and make your presentation, please.
Good evening, Mike Trilisi, Senior Vice President, Data Center Operations for CoreWeave. As the mayor mentioned, we are a specialized cloud computing company. Our focus is specifically on artificial intelligence. A little bit about our company, we are headquartered in Livingston, New Jersey, we're roughly about 1,000 employees strong and growing, 2024 revenues of $1.9 billion, which we are forecasting to double in, by the end of 2025. We currently operate 33 data centers across North America and in Europe, accounts for about 460 megawatts of total critical capacity, and we have another 1.6 gigawatts of power under contract, which we will be delivering over the next four to five years. You know, we're super excited about this project, at 180 megawatts, it would be one of our largest expansions. Our focus really here is, you know, to differentiate ourselves and our entire compute stack, and the foundation of all of that is the data center. From the site selection to where we locate it, the availability of people to effectively build and deliver this project, and then the people in the community that are there to help support it with the, with the staff that the mayor had mentioned. What else could we, can I answer any questions about the company before I hand it over to Decennial folks?
Sir, sir, the questions that were raised about the power, that's what the negotiations is about, is making sure they can provide the power you need, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And this is the developmental agreement that is in front of us tonight, and these other two resolutions, based, mayor, and this question's kind of to you and Kevin Smith, basically saying, once they work that out, we're in total support of this, correct?
Absolutely, councilman.
Yeah. But this doesn't lock us down as far as any agreement with NIPSCO or anything like that?
I, that's a great question, Councilman Whorple, and there was concern on that, on both sides of this, that should NIPSCO fail to come through with the power we need for this project, this agreement that we're approving tonight dies, all of it. There's no liability on their side of the fence, there's no liability on the city Hammond side of the fence, that was something that was worked out with our attorneys. So, hopefully, this agreement becomes valid once NIPSCO gives us the power we need. But if NIPSCO fails, everything we're doing tonight disappears.
And this basically shows NIPSCO that the city of Hammond is in full support of this as long as they work the agreement out.
Yes, sir.
As far as the power, correct?
Yes, sir. I think NIPSCO wants this to happen too, but I think that it's the last step is NIPSCO. They could say yes, or they could say no.
But I mean, this is, one last question, and I don't know how to word this. This basically says the city of Hammond isn't just peeing in the wind as far as we want a data center. This is basically saying, you guys work out the details and we support this project, correct?
It shows that we're all in, councilman. I think it's a smart show. First off, there's a lot of people that we respect standing up here right now, CoreWeave we respect, Decennial we respect, we don't want anybody to walk away. We are always interested in this project, I think what we're doing tonight shows a lot of people that are investing a lot of money in our city that we support it. And then, I think that's important for NIPSCO as well.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Maybe this is a good time to interject that. I mentioned this earlier in the caucus because it was a concern to me, and it still remains a concern, and that is, it's forecasted that just a handful of hyperscaler data centers coming to northern Indiana will use more electricity by 2030 than all Indiana residential customers, more than all Indiana commercial customers, and almost as much as all Indiana industrial customers use today. So, this isn't just about these guys. This is about the 14 data centers that are projected right now under the NIPSCO umbrella. So, the concern is, how, how are they going to do that? Six months ago, you said they weren't, they didn't have a handle on it, couldn't go forward. What changed?
Councilman, I think one of the things I've learned about data centers in the short time we've been doing this, a year plus, is out of the 14 data centers you mentioned, maybe one or two of them actually happened. There, a lot are going to fail because of the power. And because of the location, this isn't one of them. This is a perfect location for a data center, surrounded by power. Granted, it's not enough to get it done, but I, you know, I think this, our location in Hammond, I can't talk about the other 13, I think our location in Hammond is about as perfect as it gets in this state.
I'm not knocking the idea.
I know, that's what we're talking about though, councilman, I mean, can't really talk about.
Because NIPSCO needs to present to us in a way that makes us secure that residents will continue to be prioritized as these data centers goes.
But that's, I think that's a separate issue, personally, I'm not going to tell you how to think about it, councilman, but.
I think NIPSCO needs to present to us to give me at least.
Okay.
A comfort level about all this before we proceed.
Okay.
Because we're on thin, we're on thin ground and there are no decisions made, and, but we are planning to move this thing forward, but I don't think we have all the answers, and I think for myself, I'd be neglectful to go forward without having those answers.
Okay. But then, I appreciate that and I respect it, okay? But I do want to point out that for my seat, I want to show amazing investors that we're in this, and that's why we're doing this, and if I left it up to NIPSCO, NIPSCO may wait a year, a year and a half, and then what's going to happen to the money and the investors that want, are they going to stay, be here a year and a year and a half from now? We're taking a chance, if I wait for NIPSCO. We're taking a chance. I think this shows, these important people, we support this project, and if NIPSCO kills it, we can't control that, I don't think anybody's going to be happy about it, but I think this is in our power, and for me, it's a show of support to amazing people that want to do amazing things in our city, so that's where I sit. So I respect your opinion.
Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Mayor, real quick, mayor, that was kind of the point of my question, because we're kind of in the spot here of, what if NIPSCO negotiates a great deal with them and the city of Hammond ain't all in? That's going to put NIPSCO on the spot, you know, and I think that this is.
You said it, not me, councilman.
Right. I mean, if we turn around and we don't show these guys that we're serious, why, what's to prevent them from walking?
What's to prevent them from going to Valparaiso?
Right.
And Valparaiso doesn't have the same concerns that the councilmen have.
And that was just.
And Valparaiso's like, let's do this in Valpo.
I'm not trying to argue with anybody.
No, I agree with you, I don't want to see this located anywhere else but the city Hammond, that's why I'm here right now, pushing.
This is just, again, like I said, a developmental agreement that says, when they work the power out, we're for this project, correct?
Yes, sir, exactly.
Thank you.
However, if they have the power to operate these data centers, in the event that something occurs and there's a shortage, who gets prioritized?
They don't have the power to get this done, they have to buy it, that's part of what we're doing right now. They have to go out on the open market and buy power from solar plants and wind farms in other states, and they put it on the grid, and then NIPSCO brings it over here to fill our data centers. They don't have the power, they have to buy it, that's part of the problem that we're seeking right now. They have to go on the open market and buy hundreds of millions of dollars worth of electric for the next 20 years, and that's part of what we're doing right now, so. Can we let them talk? I don't.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, and I was just going to add to that, to that exact point, you have two, two sorts of checks and balances there. You have state law, which requires resource adequacy for all of your utilities, meaning they must demonstrate that they can serve their obligations at least three years out into the future. If they don't, I U R C can compel them to go out and purchase more capacity to ensure, to the point where I U R C is confident that they can in fact serve their obligations out into the future. Second, you have MISO, which is your kind of regional transmission operator that regulates a lot of the utilities, making sure everybody has enough capacity, and they kind of run the, the entire middle part of the United States. They too can compel utilities to go out, make sure they have enough money, I'm sorry, enough power to acquire and serve. enough power to acquire and serve all customers, not just prioritizing one versus the other. So not to speak on behalf of NIPSCO, not to try to assuage that concern, but I do think that you do have some comfort in the fact that you have state law and you have a regional transmission operator kind of on your side to make sure that these utilities are serving everyone and maintain keeping the lights on.
I appreciate that. That does help. I still would like NIPSCO to talk to us. I think that's important that we hear from them because all this appears to be, it could be doable. And it might be doable, and I hope it is. But in the event that there are shortages of power and they can't get it from other vendors quick enough, who gets, who gets browned out? I'm concerned about that because that's going to be an issue in time with projected 30 data centers in Indiana.
Councilman, one of the things that NIPSCO is doing right now is they're making a spinoff company. They're attempting to, and they're trying to get permission from IURC to make a spinoff company. I forgot what they called it.
GenCo.
Thank you. New GenCo. That spinoff company would deal directly with data centers and would separate data centers completely from the residential. And that's not necessarily a good thing for residential, quite frankly, because data centers will help us drive our energy bills down if we're all in the same boat. NIPSCO is attempting to split them up with IURC right now, which would address your concern, but I don't think it would do any good for us ratepayers, being honest. I think we'd be paying lower power bills if we were all together. That's one of the things I've learned in this. And seems like by splitting them off, it's good for Nice Horse because the profits that data centers are going to give go straight to Nice Horse and the shareholders, and thus over here in the utility, our utility payments are going to the same place. I think NIPSCO is attempting to do that as we speak, Councilman Mark.
I appreciate that. I remember hearing and reading a little bit about that, but I appreciate the summary.
If I may add one point to that.
Yes.
Data centers operate with 99.9999% uptime. And so we are a very stable user of power from the grid. And that allows NIPSCO to work with its kind of parent organization, as he was alluding to, MISO, to plan out the construction of new generation, whether that's natural gas or wind power or solar plants or nuclear, far beyond just the NIPSCO region. Data centers substantiate that load and are a very large, stable user. So we prop up the grid as part of a planning exercise for this. You're not wrong at all to have concerns about the overall planning process and ensuring that when these data centers come forward for an interconnection, that NIPSCO is abiding by the law to identify the generation that we're going to use, and in this case, require us to contract for some period of time so that nobody is left without power. It's also important to note that this won't be using power until early 2027. And so we have between now and 2027 to finalize the procurement of power, some of which will come off of power plants that aren't even built yet.
And so you'll build in 2027? Is that what you said?
We start, yeah, we start building as, really, as soon as NIPSCO approves the power.
When is NIPSCO building their plant that's in talks? And when would your facility be done?
When I spoke with the CEO of NIPSCO, he addressed, first off, a lot of these options are out of state, solar power, wind farms, nuclear energy. But a lot of the in-state, they asked straight up if Hammond would be interested in what they call peaker, natural gas peakers, that NIPSCO plans to put all throughout their service territories, which are small little generating units that are run by natural gas and they generate electricity, and it's clean. And I think that's part of NIPSCO's plan going forward, but I'm not sure if these, maybe they could because they've been working close with NIPSCO. But I think a lot of these questions are more appropriate directly, directed to NIPSCO, in my opinion. But I do know that one of their plans is to use these peaker, these natural gas peakers throughout the service territory to help address. Because if you notice, NIPSCO is shutting down power plants right now, simultaneous to all this, so.
So if you build and you complete your build, but NIPSCO still hasn't built their plant?
NIPSCO can't commit to this without the power, Councilman. They can't commit to this without knowing for a fact. That's why these gentlemen have put $25 million forward, I think, $30 million to NIPSCO for power into the future. They needed that, and they did it. $30 million. No guaranteed return, just, here you go, NIPSCO, $30 million to buy power for the next 20 years. NIPSCO needed that down just to start contracting with these out-of-state power providers. And they came up with that huge amount of money already.
All right. Thanks.
So I'm Dave Pavlik, co-founder of Decennial Group. We're based out of Chicago. I was born and raised in Chicago. I just wanted to thank you for your support. When we decided to acquire the building one of the Hammond Data Center campus in 2021, we bought it mid-construction. It was really important for us to feel comfortable acquiring that asset and making the investment at the caliber that we were. It was really important to know that the community and really that the leadership from the mayor's office was going to be there. So we sat with Mayor McDermott, gave him our plan and vision for what we were going to do. We shook hands that it wasn't going to be easy, but that we would stick with this thing. And if we did, we hoped it could be the home for artificial intelligence when people weren't really talking about artificial intelligence at all. When we started with building one, Chat GPT was not even a thing. There wasn't even an idea at that point. Through a lot of hard work from a lot of people, from contractors, we've spent well over, at this point, well over $80 million with local contractors for electrical, mechanical, plumbing, roofing, re-roofing, fiber, which, Councilman, is another reason why this is a really important site. It sits on some of the densest, fastest fiber in the United States, which we made an investment to put in. But to this point, the mayor shook our hand and said, I'll stick with you if you stick with us in Hammond, and you've been a phenomenal partner. Probably should put on a class for some of the other communities out there that we are trying to build data centers for. So I just wanted to thank you for all of your time, attention, and for allowing us this opportunity.
Much appreciated. And I'm looking forward to a data center being built, but I do have one thing for the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm happy to go forward with the development agreement and the other resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman.
If you can bring NIPSCO to the next meeting.
I'm not sure I could do that, being honest with you. I mean, they're, I mean, I'm not sure I could do that, being honest with you. I do want your vote, believe me, Councilman, but I'm not trying to make a promise to you I can't keep.
I appreciate that.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
During caucus, I asked if we were involved in the negotiations with NIPSCO, and the answer was no.
I agree.
It's these gentlemen.
But I think there's, I think that we are involved indirectly. How about that?
Well.
What you're doing right now is indirectly involved, right?
Yes.
One of what we're doing right now is indirectly involved. But I could tell you, I've had multiple conversations with the CEO of NIPSCO. He seems like a wonderful person, being honest. He seems like a very smart person, seems like a very honest person, and he knows this is incredibly important to the City of Hammond.
I would just like to make it clear that this is saying that we are in agreement with the plan.
Yes, ma'am.
It's up to these gentlemen to negotiate with NIPSCO.
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
But I mean, the reason I don't think NIPSCO would want to come here is I'm not sure at this point they could tell us what we want to hear, Councilman. And I, you know, I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
I'd be happy to hear what they have to say.
I, I would be interested in hearing that too. I promise, I'll reach out. I'm not sure I can guarantee you. Yeah, for sure, for sure. We have a, my former chief of staff's a director at NIPSCO. He's gotten me in touch with the CEO multiple times. I think we have a good relationship, so I'll ask him. But I can't guarantee you, Councilman. So I don't want to flip to you.
I appreciate that. And in good faith, I will go forward with.
Thank you. And Councilman Mark, by the way, I do want to point, I remember you challenged me about a year ago about permanent funding source for College Brown, and I remembered that. I did. And I think this is a good answer to that, so.
That's another issue.
I know, I know.
That I don't want to get into.
That's fine, that's fine.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just have a quick question, Mayor. In terms of, I guess, like, space connected to, I know this is the second in addition to data centers, is there maybe potential for even more? Do we think this is?
I believe so. There's still room after.
For your end?
I couldn't hear, couldn't hear.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's good news. We can get College Brown for 20 years after that, maybe, so.
Anybody?
I, I love this project. I think it's an amazing opportunity for our city. I love the fact that we're talking about data centers, and I look backwards and I don't see 400 people with pitchforks ready to throw us out. I love this. I think City Hammond loves this. We know how the City of Hammond feels about our scholarship program. I think that strengthens it. And it's tech, you know, it's great for all of us, I think. So I appreciate you all thinking about it.
Thank you, Mayor. And gentlemen, thank you. It's been enlightening. Thank you.
I can't get my iPhone to charge half the time, and you got your. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Carmen Roca on 25R16.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, eight in favor, one absent. Now we'll go back to the item A on the agenda on the resolutions.
25R12, a resolution of the Hammond City Council confirming resolution number 24R-20A2 that designated and established a certain area of the City of Hammond, Indiana as an economic revitalization area.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of 24R12.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Salinas. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, this is declared confirmatory resolution for 24R20A2. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Carmen Roca.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, one absent.
25R13, a resolution of the Hammond City Council granting Decennial Group LLC an assessed valuation deduction, tax abatement, for tangible real property under Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I move for final passage of 25R13.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
This outlines an abatement over 10 years for real property located at 10 Digital Crossroads Drive in the City of Hammond.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
This is for probably the mayor. In the event this doesn't fly, 16, 12, and 13, I'll go away.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. That was negotiated because there was concern on the other side of the fence as well that there may be liability if this falls apart. So in order to clear up the liability for them, we also cleared up the liability for the city, Councilman.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Carmen Roca.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, zero opposed, with one absent.
25R14, a resolution authorizing the Hammond Fire Department and the Hammond Police Department to apply for fiscal years 2025 and 2026 grants programs.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I move for final passage of 24R14.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
It's a resolution for Hammond Police and Fire. Every year they do apply for grants. These grants always are grants in themselves where the city doesn't have a, have to also put in money for that. So it's just grants, and we're authorizing, we're authorizing those departments to apply for them.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Carmen Roca.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, zero opposed, with one absent.
25R15, a resolution reappointing Bernard Grisolia to the Lake County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of 25R15.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Tyler. Mayor?
I just want to, I work real close with both of our appointees at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We've gone through a lot in three years while Bernie was there. We went through a termination, a lawsuit. There's other challenges that we're dealing with right now with the Convention and Visitors Authority that Chief Grisolia is very aware of. I know that it's a council appointment. You guys picked him a long time ago, and he's done an excellent job. I know I'm the mayor, and I'm not supposed to say this, but I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that Bernie's, Chief Bernie's doing a great job. So I hope you reappoint him because we can keep our little team up on that board and start defending. We learned that City Hammond sends $2.5 million a year to the Convention and Visitors Bureau off the taxes generated off of Hammond Hotels, largest in Northwest Indiana. We're the biggest contributor to the Convention and Visitors Authority, and I don't think Hammond's getting back what, anywhere near what we put into it. And that's the challenge I have to Bernie and to Kim, to start bringing more money back to the City of Hammond. So it's up to you, obviously, because it's a council appointment, but I think Bernie does a good job. So thank you. And by the way, I appreciate the councils very much. You guys, I think we did a good thing today for the city, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I would just like to state that Bernard, Bernie, as we all know him, always has the welfare of the city of Hammond at heart. And I do ask that you reappoint him.
And for the record, Bernie does contact me from time to time, asking how he's doing. We have any questions for him or anything like that. We always say we're going to have lunch, but they're not used to talking to a retired guy.
He's a busy man.
He's like, when you check your schedule, we'll have lunch. And I'm like, what's schedule? I'm retired. So is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Carmen Roehl call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show, eight in favor, one absent. Zero opposed. Does anybody, that concludes resolutions, correct?
It does.
Item number 12, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman, Councilman Salinas.
I wanted to remind everyone that with the summertime upon us, downtown Hammond, every Monday night is hosting their Monday Blues Cruise Car Show. It's, starts over at 489 Fayette Street from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. It's a good time if you haven't come out. I know last summer, most of us showed up there, picked up our favorite cars of the night, had some delicious food. Last week, Councilman Rakos and I were there and for the season opener, and it, it was a good showing. We had about 50 to 60 cars, and it's nice seeing people back in downtown Hammond. But if you get a chance, please come on out, give it a look. Promise you're going to have some fun.
I seen you giving me the side eye because I said I was going last week, but my grandson had a game.
We'll get you over there. I'm not worried.
Question on that.
Mr. President.
On the question on that, is the art center?
It's from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
5 to 9. Thank you.
Is the South Shore Arts Building open during that cruise?
During that time, they are, they were open, they were not last week. But Paul Henry's is open as well, so we stopped in there as well.
I had a penny from Italy that my dad gave me, and I'm like, rather than throw it out, I'll give it to them.
Why not?
Yeah. Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I would just like to remind everyone that fireworks are prohibited in the city of Hammond, with the exception of two hours, between the hours of 5:00 PM and two hours after sunset, June 29th, June 30th, July 1st, July 2nd, July 3rd, July 5th, July 6th, July 7th, July 8th, and July 9th. On the 4th of July, between 10:00 AM and midnight, fireworks are permissible. So please respect your neighbors. And in addition to that, we have had a relatively dry spring so far. We don't want to catch anyone's house on fire.
Right.
Thank you.
Do I need to re-sign yet, Carmen?
Mr. President.
Councilman Salinas.
I did have one more announcement. This Friday, also in downtown Hammond, begins the kickoff of the farmer's market. Again, it's at 489 Fayette, and it's the second Friday of every month. So it begins this Friday, June 13th, from 3:00 to 8:00 PM, farmer's market. Come on out. I found a lot of goodies there. I'll be back down there and replenishing my stock. So thank you. Come on down.
Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none, new and unfinished business is closed. Under public expression, our first speaker is Tommy Kazmirzak, or Tom Kazmirzak. Thank you.
Counsel, how are we? I'm familiar with most of you. I haven't done this before. I prefer to do all my complaining on the 311 app. And most of the time, that's effective. But the issue I've had recently, I live in the 5th district. I can throw a rock and hit the third. So my topic is about the old Walmart, and it's pretty timely considering what the mayor talked about, about a future development there. The issue is that usually beginning on Fridays, there's upwards of 20, 25 semi trucks using that parking lot as a truck stop. They're there all weekend. There, I've seen people out there working on the trucks. The city's invested millions of dollars in that area with the sports complex and the YMCA and future investments. So it'd be pertinent to like, that's like the, for a lot of people that go to that area, that's their impression of the city of Hammond is that area. I know there's an ordinance for overnight truck parking. I know it's kind of a gray area if that's vacant, because technically there are, I think there's at least one business in that building. So I don't know if it can be enforced through that ordinance. The other thing is there's a donation box there. I took a picture of it on my way here, actually. Not sure who controls that. It is overflowing. There's so much stuff laying in that parking lot by that donation box. It just looks horrible. So that's all I wanted to say. So thanks.
George. I blew it, didn't I?
George Story-Robertsdale. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I took some issue with Councilwoman Vanez concerning her perspective as to the negotiations between NIPSCO and, I guess, the, the data, continental data, or whatever it's called. I forget, remember her damn name. Anyway, yes, they're in privy of negotiation, possibly privy of contract, but we, in fact, are beneficiaries. And I submit that we are directly involved, we're directly, the consequences directly flow to us. My major concern that wasn't discussed with, with respect to GenCo was whether or not there was sufficient infrastructure to handle buying more power. You remember those rolling blackouts they used to have in California and Texas and all that stuff, Oklahoma? Because these guys were playing games, had a big scandal over it. George Bush, 43, a couple of his buddies got indicted and went to jail for it. And, but they were playing games of rolling blackouts. And, you know, these corporations, they're modeled on efficiency. And they're always going to go the most efficient route. And they're always going to say, yeah, we think we, you know, we think we've got it covered. And in fact, they'll fall short, and they won't have the excess capacity, physical infrastructure, to, even if they could buy it, could they transmit it, and stuff like that. So I really dispute the idea that we're not involved , because we're not part of the negotiation. Indeed, I wonder to what extent the Office of, oh my God, Office of Utility, Utility, Utility.
I U R C.
Consumer Counselor, O U C C.
I U R C.
O U C C, as part, that represents the people underneath the, the I U R C. I think Bill Fein used to be the, used to be the counselor. I don't know if he still is. That's, he's a Hammond attorney for anybody that doesn't know. So we do have recourse, I think, to find out, hopefully. I don't know to what extent. I don't know if they're mediating, or do they sit in judgment once a deal is cut, to say, to say, oh, this is kosher, not kosher, you got to do this, you got to do that. Don't know the criteria, but you guys can learn the criteria, because I'm sure I'm not going to get it. But you guys are, you guys are the officials. So, yeah, Bill Fein, the O U C C, should help us out. Let's see here.
Is that it?
Yeah, I guess I could ramble on, but that was my main concern, was a matter of perspective. I, I hardly dispute that, you know, we're not privy in some way implied, or necessarily by virtue of our third-party status and third-party beneficiaries, at the very least, at the very least, and under the I U R C. That can't possibly be three minutes.
George, I just want to know what the clock says. You want three more?
No, it's okay.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion has been made.
Six.
Seconded by Councilman Spitali. All those in favor.